All right. Hi, everybody. It's five thirty, so it's time to get started. I'm Cody Hertz, the chair of the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to ask Mike Johnson to lead us in the budget rankings.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands while we share our God, in physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. So thank you all for coming today. It's been great having you for us all to get familiar with the candidates that are going to be running for city council. Uh, so before we begin, uh, I, you guys submitted questions, and so I have those up here. In addition to that, if you guys have any more questions, um, you can head back to the back of the room, and there are cards back there, no cards. And then you can give them to Mavis, who's in the back of the room, who will also be timing, uh, the candidates. And at the end, other questions that we already have here that have already been submitted, if we have time for additional questions, we will go ahead and give those to the candidates. And then if we have time after that, depending on how many questions we have, we may have time for closing statements, correct? Okay, perfect. All right. So, um, I'm going to begin by letting each candidate get the opportunity to present themselves. They're going to get five minutes for an opening speech. Um, we've got our first candidate is Jerry King.
Hey, I gotta go first.
Yeah.
Thanks, ladies.
Let me, and then, um, and then we have Mayor Tammy Trent, and then we have Nellie Nichols as our third candidate here, so.
I have a one minute and a time.
I can go see it.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah.
Stupid.
That works.
So you each have five minutes to talk about yourself, and then she'll get it at the four-minute mark. She'll raise her hand. If you can't see, I will also, I can help with that. And then we'll move on to the next candidate, and we'll just go that way. So, all right. Can you start with you?
I don't think it's going to take five minutes, but appreciate the time and effort anyway. Uh, my name is Jerry King. I've lived in Fortuna for twenty-six years. I know most of you here. Um, whether it's because we've worked together, we went to church together, or, uh, through business or social. I, uh, I enjoy this town. I, I love this town. This is the place I've been the most in my entire life. Most of you know, I grew up, left home, went to college, and went in military. Uh, so being anywhere for twenty-six years was a big achievement for me. I decided to run for council, uh, at the time because I knew, I knew if I didn't do it now, it would be too late for me because I, we all are getting older and life would have brought me to a different, uh, a different path. And so I told myself, um, I couldn't be part of the solution if I wasn't willing to be part of the problem, if I wasn't willing to, uh, volunteer my time. I can volunteer in other ways, and we have, uh, through a lot of charitable donations and things like that in the community. But the one resource that I've had that I haven't been able to share, uh, in a, you know, a very conclusive way, and like you have, is my time. And so I'm giving the community my time, if elected, to, uh, serve my fellow citizens in the best way possible. How I do that? Experience. Uh, between the military and being in business for twenty-six years, I've learned a lot about people and how to function, uh, in an economic way. Uh, there's money coming in, there's money going out. And I kind of like the fact that I'd rather have more money coming in than going out. And what money we do have, we spend it wisely. So I'm offering myself to, uh, to do that to the best of my ability. And that's pretty much it.
Correct. Thank you. Uh, Sammy Trent.
I'm actually going to read mine, and I'm hoping that you can hear me. First of all, I'm glad to be here, and I would also, first of all, like to thank the chamber for hosting this, um, event to get to know the candidates. And thank you, all of you, for taking an interest and coming to hear what the candidates have to say. Um, having lived in many places due to my military upbringing, I know firsthand what makes a community special. Some places I lived were good, others not so much. But every time I visited Fortuna to see family, I felt an undeniable connection. I cried every time we had to leave and go home. When my dad retired from the Navy, moving to Fortuna was like a dream come true. I'm proud to say that I'm a third-generation graduate of Fortuna High School, and Fortuna has and always will be my home. One of my proudest accomplishments on the council has been securing funding through the Humboldt County's Measure Z public safety for two public safety committees or positions. Thanks to this funding, we've been able to support a school resource officer dedicated to protecting our children while building positive, lasting relationships with them. Additionally, our drug task force officer has played an instrumental role in combating illegal drug activities in our community. There was no drug enforcement south of Eureka before we got this drug, uh, drug task officer. These crucial, crucial positions, which require annual renewal, have been sustained through diligent lobbying to, to the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. This ensures we continue to prioritize safety in our schools and our community. Community involvement has always been at the heart of what I do. For over sixteen years, I have proudly volunteered at, at the rodeo events. I also serve on several boards and committees, including the Fortuna Fireworks Festival Committee, the Hobson Humboldt Board, the Humboldt Transit Authority Board, the Senior Advisory Committee. I'm a longstanding member of the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce and actively support veterans through the American Legion Auxiliary. I also sit on the Humboldt County's Measure Z Advisory Committee, ensuring we make wise decisions about the use of public funds. Additionally, I have the honor of serving, I had the honor of serving as president of the Redwood, um, Empire Division League of California Cities and currently represent the division on the Public Safety Committee. I served on the Fortuna Planning Commission for ten years before running for city council. As we look to the future, I have clear goals for our city. I am committed to bringing new businesses to Fortuna to create jobs and support economic growth. The recent sale of the Mill District is promising, has promising opportunities as the new owner is actively recruiting businesses to the area. The city has also applied for grant funding to improve Newburg Park and develop the new section. These enhancements will provide a facility that, that will provide a facility for regional tournaments, bringing visitors to our beautiful city and boosting our local economic development. I'm talking about the fields over there for soccer and baseball, so we can have more kids' tournaments and stuff here. I have the experience and knowledge to lead us through these projects over the next four years. I love Fortuna and our community, and with your support, I hope to keep Fortuna moving in a positive direction.
Finish. Okay. Perfect timing. Okay. All right. Thank you, Tammy. Uh, now I'd like to introduce Nellie Nichols.
Hi, my name is Nellie Nichols. It's okay. Nobody says it right. That's why it says Nell in parentheses. Um, there is a street, though, so I'm going to have to go walk up and down and tell people how to pronounce it correctly. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Fortuna. I was born in Scotia because there wasn't a hospital in Fortuna yet. My mom was born in a house on the corner of, uh, Rona Ville Road in Weber, and my grandfather was also born in a house in Rona Ville. We go back a long ways. Um, I still have five generations of family living here, so the future of this town is, goes deep personally. Uh, my little, my little ones need a really good place to live. Um, I went to school here. I still have a lot of friends that I grew up with. I stopped and talked to one of them today when I was out on my dog walk. It was great. Um, my longest career that I've had was almost as long as Jerry's lived in Fortuna, and that was twenty-four years at Humboldt Transit Authority. Um, it's a public agency for all of you that are not familiar with it, and they have a board of directors that's made up of five city council people from different cities and two supervisors. So I got very familiar with public and how it works and how public funding works and just the gears that make all of the public work. Um, I served on two different big funding committees for Humboldt County Association of Governments. The Technical Advisory Committee, which programs most of the transportation money that comes into this county for all the cities, and also the SS TAC, which is for social services. Um, as I walk around town meeting people, I'm becoming more and more educated. I thought I knew this town, but they're really telling me a lot that I did not know. First of all, about half the people want one thing and the other half wants something entirely different. And they're both very adamant about it, too, like hands on the hips. You're not going to let this happen, are you? Um, so yeah, it's, it's been a real eye-opener, but it's also been good. The people are kind for the most part, even though I'm bothering them in the middle of the day and trying to get them to read my flyer. They're, they're nice about it, and they, they keep their dogs from hurting me. Um, there, I have not worked with the police department before, so I went and met with Chief Day, uh, Monday to familiarize myself with the relationship between the council and the police department. Very interesting. I have a lot to learn in that respect. I also, just like these guys, love this city. Um, in my opinion, I think it's one of the most beautiful cities in Humboldt County. It's well-kept, it's safe, it's just, it's magnificent, and we have better weather than a lot of them, too. What it has is unique and special. Um, I've lived both downtown in Fortuna on Ninth Street for, that's where I was raised and where I raised my own family. And then after I retired, I moved out into a more rural part, which I'm just loving even more. It's pretty cool. I hope I can demonstrate my ability to serve on the council as we hold these discussions tonight. I know the challenges we're going to face in the next four years are going to be difficult. There's going to be some really hard things coming up. I think that my time serving on the Fortuna Planning Commission is going to help in that respect because I have learned that some of the, um, initial phases of how a city works, because I never actually worked for a city. I did work in public, but not for a city. And I just want to thank everyone for coming and spending your valuable time here with us, and I hope this will help you make a good decision on who to vote for when you go to the polls. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So now we're going to begin with questions. We have the questions that you guys submitted here. Again, if you have a question or something starts to question while we're very little talking, uh, there are cards at the back. Give them to Mavis, and we'll, we'll do this at the beginning. So each candidate's going to get two questions or two minutes to answer, answer each question. Every question is going to switch. So like Jerry would start first, then Tammy, then now, and the next time Tammy, now, and then Jerry, then now Jerry. Yeah, that makes sense. So, okay, we're going to go ahead and get it started, and then at the one-minute mark, she'll, she'll, you know, so happy with it. Okay. The first question is, what are your top three priorities for our city if elected?
Supremed.
You can go first.
So I've had, uh, quite a few interesting lunches and conversations with a lot of staff in the city, uh, getting to get acquainted with the staff, uh, and the issues that, uh, us everyday citizens may not be aware of. And what I come to find, uh, after dissecting the budget, uh, being concerned about uh, rate increases, taxes, et cetera, so on, I felt what I would, uh, focus on uh, is making sure that the staff is treated equitably. Uh, there, if you go through that budget and you see who's paid what, and, uh, if you like clean drinking water, you would probably want those guys to get, make a little bit more money than what they're making. So I was telling the city manager yesterday that my entire focus would be on the city council budget, how they spend their money wisely, that we take care of the staff of the city, uh, whether Measure P passes or not, there's going to have to be a plan for that. Uh, if it does pass, it makes it a little easier. If it doesn't pass, then there's going to be some very tough decisions to be made, uh, concerning layoffs or whatever. So it's all, for me, it's all about listening to the community, passing that through the council, being professional and taking care of the city staff and making sure that we remain a, a safe, viable, and active community. Can we bring in business? I hope so. Uh, Mill District's going to be at least five years out, so we need to do more about downtown. Uh, there's a lot of things we need to do, but not just in Mill District. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tammy, the question is, what are your top three priorities for our city if elected? So you get two minutes.
Okay. The first one I would say is to continue to work on increasing revenue. Um, we need that for many reasons, to run the city, but we also need it for employees. Our employees are our biggest asset. And if we don't be, keep up on wages, if we're not able to give them wages, we already have employees going to other cities and going to other jobs because our wages are going down, our revenue is going down, and other cities are going up and other jobs are going up. So that's one of the things that is real important is I want to be able to take care of our employees because without good employees, we don't have a good city. Um, the other one is, is continue to work on the mill property. I'm excited about this. Um, we just got another grant um, opportunity for the roundabouts on Kenmark. Both of those intersections have to be improved to get that property developed. The developer is actively talking to businesses to try to bring, um, more business into Fortuna, and that's, um, going to be a big revenue increase there. And third, um, no, I can't think of a third one.
There was a lot.
Yeah. Those are the, those are the main ones.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now, the question is, what are your, are your top three priorities in our, for our city if elected? Sorry.
Okay, we seem to have a theme going here. All of us are very focused on bringing more revenue into our city, and it would be really um, ideal if that revenue came from outside sources. I mean, the people here do a good job of providing tax revenue for the city. But it, I'm, I'm just really hoping that we can do something that's so spectacular that it attracts people to come here and stay here and spend their money here. Because that would be a huge boon to not only the tax revenue, just to the local businesses and hotels and whatever we've got going. I know the Mill District isn't going to happen in the next four years, but I would like to see that it starts out on the right track, that we are focused in the right direction for whatever is going to be best for this city and be the most beneficial for all of us. And the police presence being as visible as it is here, I think is, is crucial. I think it's one of the reasons our crime rates are down fifteen percent. We have a good police presence, and I'd like to maintain that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So now this time, we're going to start with Tammy, then now, then Jerry. Okay. Tammy, the question is, how will you support small businesses, especially in the wake of economic challenges?
The only thing I can think of is just to, you know, help, help the small businesses is just keeping them in, involved in the community. Um, things like the chamber going to that really helps with small businesses. Um, just word of mouth, um, trying to get people into our small businesses. Our small businesses are pretty much run, run our city. We don't have a whole lot in there, and we need to keep protecting them and do what we can. You know, as far as, as the city doing stuff for small businesses, um, there's not, I mean, we could just encourage businesses, help, you know, help them wherever we can, but financially, there's not really a whole lot, you know, we can do, we can. Um, that's a tough question. It, you know, it's, our business, small businesses are, are extremely important. You know, just given the encouragement and the help that we can.
Right. Thank you. All right. Now, the question is, how will you support small businesses, especially in the wake of economic challenges?
The wake of economic challenges are very burdensome. Um, I think supporting small businesses means going there, using them. Don't go buy bread somewhere else. Try to go with the local bakery if you can. Um, go to Bob's to eat. Um, my, my, uh, uncle had a barber shop on Main Street for forty-one years, and the people were amazing at supporting him. They didn't go anywhere else. They went there. And I think that's probably the key to really supporting local businesses. If you have a choice and you're able to use them instead of using another business, it helps them tremendously. We might pay a little bit more, but I think in the long run, it would be worth it.
Thank you. All right. Jerry, the question is, how will you support small businesses, especially in the wake of economic challenges?
Well, considering I own a small business, it's kind of near, dear, my heart. Um, and I see several out here that either have owned this business before or currently do. Um, I thank you for saying shop local because we have a lot of loyal folks in this town that do shop local that will refuse to go to Eureka or whatever if they can get it here in town. So what we have to do is we have to make sure that we have businesses here that provide what our, our folks want, uh, which means if we can streamline the ability for them to get a business license, uh, because I know in the past, there's been some issues where somebody wants to bring a business in and you can't quite get the business license. Well, I think if they bring revenue to this city and they're willing to buy a license, they should get it. And, uh, if they want to provide that service here, uh, most of us, a lot of us here are members of the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we've got to continue to support each other that way. Uh, Downtown Business Improvement District or the Downtown Business, you know, the Association, we all have to continue to work together. I'm kind of in no man's land down there, so I'm not in your district, but I'm in the chamber, not in Strong's Creek or, or Redwood Village. But businesses like me can work with you guys so that we all continue to work together and support our businesses in this town. So shop local, make licensing easier, go out and attract those small mom-and-pop shops and get them into downtown. Because we have space right now, right, in downtown where we can bring businesses in tomorrow.
Can you start carrying pillowcases?
How about a Home Goods? Home Goods.
It's okay. I needed to know that.
I'll see what I can do now.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Third question, we're going to start with you, Nell, today. Uh, how do you plan to address the city's budget challenges while maintaining essential services?
I have kind, no, I, I'm thinking, it's rare, but I do that sometimes. Um, we did that. When I worked at the Transit Authority, we had a very limited budget, and everybody wanted bus service, and it was a really difficult thing to pull off. We had to make some cuts that we didn't feel good about. We had to raise fares that we didn't necessarily feel good about. But we tried to do it in such a way that if you are a person who was struggling, there was a mechanism in place where you may not have to pay that fare increase. We, we really struggled to make it to where people who have a hard time, like I am now on retirement, that you can still go out and do and be and afford. Um, uh, I knew I was going to have several, um, moments up here where I would lose my train of thought and lose the debate, but um, we did do that often, and we negotiated with our union, too, and they, they understood. Um, they would make sacrifices, we would make sacrifices, and then when the money did come, we were in good shape. We could apply for every grant that was possible to apply for. That was a huge thing because buses cost a half a million dollars a piece. And, um, can you do like a thirty-second thing where you, okay? Uh, um, so yeah, I have done that actually, and it's a tedious process, and it's, it's tough. It makes hard decisions. But you can do it if you really focus on it, and what we used to do at the TAC is, we can't help you this year, we'll help you next year. And, and that worked really well between the small cities.
Thank you. All right. The question is, how do you plan to address the city's budget challenges while maintaining essential services?
Okay. So there's, there's two, you know, there's two parts to that. If Measure P passes, it's going to relieve a lot of burden from the city on having to make tough choices. Um, I'm going to be honest with everyone. I was a no vote on Measure P for weeks, uh, because I, I'm just a citizen, and I don't like increased taxes. And, uh, you know, you pay more for water, you pay more for sales tax, and I collect a lot of sales tax in my business. And then something happened. I started talking to folks in the city. I started talking to staff. I started talking to everybody. And what I found out was my opinion really didn't matter. Their opinion mattered, and their opinion was that we want the police, we want, uh, clean drinking water. We want to have recreational opportunities, and if it's going to be seventy-five cents on a hundred-dollar purchase, then that's just a sacrifice we're willing to make. So I became a Measure P supporter almost overnight. Um, if that doesn't pass, then I'm going to have to put my business experience to use. Whereas you've got to have a budget that meets the revenue, and if you're going to have cuts, you're going to have tough cuts. Will that mean that it will be personnel? It may be. Will it be services? It may be. But you've got to look everybody in the eye and say, this is our budget. This is what we can and can't do, and live with the decision and the responsibility of having made that decision. So sacrifices will have to be made without Measure P. I'll make them, and I'll live with that decision. And, uh, like you said, I'll know how you felt about that decision by how many showed up at my door the day after the vote. It was a great story Doug told me when I just went and asked him about running.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Tammy, the question is, how do you plan to address the city's budget challenges while maintaining essential services?
Okay, well, this is a part of the job that's always not fun, um, because when you have to cut services or you have to do that, people don't get, um, kind of yell at you sometimes. Um, they get mad at you. If you want to raise prices, they get mad at you. If you want to take away services, they get mad at you. So you can't win either way on that. Um, the city has been very fortunate. We've applied for a lot of grants, and we've gotten a lot of things through grants, which has been definitely an asset. I am hoping and praying that Measure P does pass. Um, it will definitely help the city. We'll be sitting in a good position. It will help us develop some of the properties that we need to, to develop to help our economic development, you know, so we can, it's like you need money to make money. So we need this money to invest in, and hopefully at some point, we won't have to do the tax measure. If we can get enough economic development done, we've got some things in the works already. We've got a hotel that's been approved, and we've got the property down at Riverlock. There are some businesses looking at going in down there. So that's my biggest hope is, you know, that that gets done because I absolutely do not want to cut employees or services. I don't want to stop filling the potholes in the streets and, you know, let our town go down because we don't have the money to fix it. So my hope is that this tax measure does pass also.
So we have, we have one question remaining. So, um, Brian, maybe if you wanted to pass out, uh, cards, some more listening after this question, if there's any questions, you can come by. So we have, we have time for this one.
Sure.
So.
It's a good lunch.
Okay, while he's doing that, I'm going to go ahead and, um, Jerry's going to start.
Lucky me.
What?
Lucky me.
Yes, and he's going to start the fifth question that we have here. And that question is, how will you ensure that residents' voices are heard in the city decision-making process?
That's pretty simple. Glad you asked that. That's pretty simple. Glad you asked that. How many of us have felt their voices were unheard? You're going about your daily business, uh, business or transactions happen. And you go, well, I wouldn't have voted for that or I wouldn't have agreed with that. I have done that myself. That's why I'm sitting up here. I decided I needed to be part of the process and not part of the grippers. Uh, how do you make that sure that happens? You listen to folks. Uh, I have found out when I put my picture on a sign and put it all over town, not sure why I did that. Uh, people decided they needed to talk to me and they talked to me about a lot of issues and they come and find me. I found out I liked listening. And so my opinion didn't matter, theirs did. It helped me make a better informed decision about things. So how you do that? You listen to folks, you make yourself accessible. Uh, I love the idea of having office hours. I have a place, I have a business, I can set aside, time aside, anybody can come and talk to me. Um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna run for this office, you know that you have to be available twenty-four seven to your constituents. And you make sure they're heard. Will you always vote the way they want you to? Maybe not, because you have to vote your conscience as well. But you've gotta listen to folks so that they aren't feeling unheard and a lot of people are that way.
Thank you. Alright. Tammy, the question is, how will you ensure that residents' voices are heard in the city decision-making process?
Well, one thing, you have to always make yourself available for, to answer questions. Um, going to events, going to chamber mixers. Um, occasionally walking down Main Street or, you know, going into different businesses and talking to them. Depends on what the issue is. Um, a lot of people will contact you on your email or your Facebook. And, um, you always have to return those calls and talk to people and just, you know, keep yourself open for communication. Um, that I like talking to people one-on-one. I don't like talking to big public groups. You know, it makes me a little bit more nervous, but, um, I like engaging in the community, talking to people and, you know, helping out however you can. And I think that's probably the biggest, biggest thing and the biggest time that you'll put in there is talking to your community and engaging with the people out there.
Alright, thank you. Alright, now the question is, how will you ensure that residents' voices are heard in the city decision-making process?
Okay, do you, this is actually something I address in my flyer. Um, that I have missed community events before that I really wanted to go to simply because I didn't know they were happening. Uh, the marketing sometimes seems like it's a little on the, if you're not on Facebook, you're, you might as well not even be on the planet. And I don't do Facebook, so I don't get these messages. So if I were on the council and had something to say about it, I would go into far-reaching outreach pro- programs. If it included mailing everyone in the city. And I have an email address specifically for my campaign on my flyer. And as I go door to door and talk to people, I ask them, please write to me, tell me what your issues are. I have a much better chance of getting something done about it if I have community support that shows you actually want it. And if I even know about it, first of all. So I think that's, um, a big thing is just getting people to know that you're looking for this or to know this is happening. Just, a lot of people, you know, they stay in their homes. I'm one of those people. That's why no one knows who I am. I'm kind of reclusive. But, but I, I wanna be involved and I think that, um, letting them know is a, is a very key point to getting people involved.
Thank you. Alright, Tammy will answer. Did you go out with picture?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Alright, the next question is, what specific plans do you have for creating jobs in our community?
The only way we're gonna create jobs is create, you know, help businesses open and, you know, we do everything we can to try to make it easier to open a business and help businesses get into our community. That's the only way I can see about, you know, creating jobs. Hopefully, the city doesn't have to lose jobs, you know, through, through that. But I would say that would be, you know, just helping, helping businesses get open, helping business come to Fortuna. Um, so there are good jobs, helping, you know, as, as the mill property or Riverwalk develop and more business comes in, there's gonna be more jobs. And so that's the only way I can think of to bring more jobs into Fortuna.
Thank you. Now, what specific plans do you have for creating jobs in our community?
Well, I don't really. Um, I mean, there's a finite number of jobs that you can have in a city this size. There isn't really a lot of industry. There's less than there used to be. I used to work at a mill that was right over there. Um, that employed quite a few people. Um, I agree with Tammy in that new businesses will a- always create jobs. Business expansion will create jobs. I don't know that we have more government jobs we can give to people. Inviting in something you have to be very careful about, yeah, will create jobs, but it'll also might create some problems you don't want. So that's a very tough question and I think that, um, we would just have to get really creative and maybe give incentives to businesses for expansion and that sort of thing. I really don't know. This is part of being new and not having been on the council yet.
Thank you. Alright. Jerry, the question is, what specific plans do you have for creating jobs in our?
Yeah. So it's not whether you're on council or not. It's, it is a tough question because you have very limited ability to, you know, to create jobs at this level. But I am a business owner. Um, currently I have twenty-eight employees. I've had as many as thirty-four. Uh, after COVID, things have been tough all around and so you wind up operating at a certain level. However, I personally, on a personal level, have a goal to, to re, uh, you know, revamp my business and reinvest in my business and keep it growing. And I would like to have, I wanna be back to thirty-five employees within the next three years because I have certain growth, uh, opportunities. So I wanna encourage everybody that owns a business to see what you can do about growing your business. That's on a personal level. On city council, the only thing I can do is be an advocate, uh, for you to do that. And how do I, how am I an advocate? Uh, encourage you to either grow a business or start a new business and make the ability to do that very simple. Incentives is a good idea. Make sure licensing is easy. Uh, believe it or not, a license can be a pretty big barrier to some folks. So let's make it easier for somebody to start a mom and pop shop. If they're bringing sales tax revenue into the city, then it's gonna, they have the ability to put heads in beds. Which is another tax that we get, we benefit from, right? Okay, that's about the limit of our capability right now.
Thank you. Alright, now the question is, how do you feel about Prop thirty-six and the remake of Prop forty-seven?
I do not know the answer to that. I'm not gonna try to make one up.
Yeah, you, do you even have the prop that you can read? I don't, I've no, I've not even heard of the prop. Is it, unless that's the one they protested yesterday in Humboldt County?
Yeah, this is.
I'll answer it, yeah.
Okay, so are you, are you passing on your time?
I, I don't even know the, what's on those props.
Okay.
Prop thirty-six is something everybody needs to read because it's something that's very important. Our police department will be out, um, educating people on this and we'll be talking about it probably a little bit at city council meetings. Prop thirty-six is, um, a proposition that will help, proposition, I think it was forty-seven and fifty-seven a few years ago when they made a lot of the felonies into misdemeanors. And that's when shoplifting went up. People aren't getting punished for shoplifting. People aren't, um, there's no consequences for doing crimes now. Pop, Prop thirty-six is something that's gonna help this. Prop thirty-six will change some of those back into, it's supposed to help with serial shoplifting. It's gonna, um, make it so you can punish people for crimes again. It, they're gonna have incentives to go to drug rehabilitation and, um, to try to help people with the drug programs to, um, serial shoplifting. Right now, people go into stores, they take what they want and they walk out and nobody says a thing to them. So it's, you know, if something's not done, things are gonna get worse. This is bad for businesses. You know, I'm sure you lose a lot in shoplifting. Um, so, yeah, that, that big stores won't, the big stores won't catch them. People walk in and it's frustrating that we pay for groceries and other people just walk in and take them all out, so we pay more for groceries. So this is a bill that's gonna be very, very important to pass is Prop thirty-six. So really look into this. Um, because it's really gonna help, um, with the crime and the police departments. They'll be able to have something to arrest people on.
Thank you. Alright. Jerry, the question. Right, Jerry? Yeah, okay. Uh, Jerry, the question is, how do you handle controversy over tough decisions? Will you be able to stand by your decision when people get upset?
Do it all the time. Um, I found out early on in life, you can please some people some of the time, but you can't please all the people all the time. Uh, whether it was in the military or in business. And so I think what I've found, um, that I try to treat everybody the way I wanna be treated. I try to be fair. I don't wanna be impartial. Try to be kind. Um, if I'm in disagreement with someone, I try to do it respectfully. If it's, if I'm in a position of authority and I have to make a decision, whether it's, uh, terminating someone or whatever, uh, or just even in disagreement with someone, let's say in the general public. Um, I usually, when I make a decision, I think it's an informed decision and I usually stand by it. If I have to do that in a political sense, whether it's council, will I have, uh, trepidation sometimes? Yep. You, do you wanna second guess yourself sometimes? Yep. The problem is, is when I do make a decision, I usually tend to live with it. For better or worse, because I made that decision. I just try to make sure I make it as the best, most informed decision and I can at the time. Then you have to live with it.
Thank you. Alright. Tammy, the question is, how do you handle controversy over tough decisions? Will you be able to stand by your decision when people get upset?
Well, as Jerry said, we do it all the time. So, you know, we do make decisions, um, within the city council. Even it, I mean, we make decisions that I don't wanna make. Um, that, and people get upset. I'll give you the other water prices for an example. Nobody wanted water prices going up, including myself, but if we don't, we won't have water. Um, so our, when our expenses go up and things like water goes up, we don't have a choice. You, it might not be a decision you wanna make, but it's a city, a decision that has to be made for the city. Um, to help the city keep moving, help the kid, city keep functioning. So, yeah, you do, you do get people upset with you. You get called names, you get, you know, sent bad messages on Facebook, but, um, you just have to, that's part of the job that you have to deal with. And, um, yeah, it happens.
Thank you. Alright, now the question is, how you handle, how do you handle controversy over tough decisions? Will you be able to stand by your decision when people get upset?
Yes. Um, we did have to make these really tough decisions at the Transit Authority and there was a lot of controversy and there was a lot of blowback from it often. Especially when we had to cut some service that people truly needed, but just couldn't be afforded. I think what I found in those instances was communicating with these people, explaining as well as I could possibly explain why we had to make that decision. Most of the people would understand it. There were a few that didn't, but most of them, if they were put in that same situation and that's how we tried to communicate it to them, would have made the same decision. When they know all the facts, a lot of anger that you get from people is when they don't have all the facts. They're seeing something just on the surface and they're not knowing all of the details that went into that decision. And there are always going to be theirs unless you have some, you know, manna from heaven that's gonna rain down on you. You're always going to have those tough decisions and you do have to stand by them. It's not easy, it's terrible, but it always goes better if you take the time to talk to the people who are hurt by it the most. That's my experience in ways.
Thank you. Okay. Tammy will go first this round. Uh, Tammy, how do you think the city can convince citizens to not use online purchases such as buying everything on Amazon?
Well, we say that all the time in meetings, shop local. Um, the thing about shopping local too is you get customer service. Um, I mean, Marilyn has got me some great shoes that I, you know, I couldn't try on in, in, you know, from Amazon and feel great on my feet. You can't get that from shopping online. So you just, you know, you, you have word of mouth. The customer service that we have from small businesses um, is, is great. I mean, you can go into Hummels and get tires. You know, and you get the customer service that goes with them. You get your tire sticks for free. You know, so you can't order things like that on, on Amazon. So I think the biggest thing, um, is to, to tell, tell everybody about your great customer service that you get here. Customer service is what keeps people shopping local. You know, unfortunately, we lost a lot of that local shopping during COVID when people couldn't go out and things were shut down. So, but we are starting to get that back. So that would be my advice is just tell everybody about our local businesses and, you know, how good they are for the community and those do- tax dollars go right back into your community.
Thank you. Alright, now the question is, how do you think the city can convince citizens to not use online purchases such as buying everything on Amazon?
I don't think you actually can in reality, but I, when I started this, I mean, I don't like Amazon. I'm one of those people that just doesn't wanna make Jeff Bezos any richer. And, um, so I try my hardest to find what I need. And a lot of times I end up at thrift stores because a lot of the businesses here just don't have everything we need. They can't. It's not even realistic to expect it. But rather than shop online, I would do that. When I started getting into this, running for city council, I looked into online shopping to see how the taxes were dispersed. And one thing I found is that an awful lot of the taxes from shopping online actually are destination-based and the city does end up realizing at least some of them. Maybe not as much as if you shopped locally, but you do get something. When people go buy their two months' worth of groceries at Costco, we get nothing. So it's, it's kinda tough. I mean, if I had the choice between sending them all to Eureka to shop for things you can't get here, I would prefer that they shopped online because we would at least realize some tax revenue from it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Jerry, the question is, how do you think, how do you think the city can convince citizens to not use online purchases such as buying everything on Amazon?
Places to go.
No, no, the bottom line is, is the city has very limited capability of being able to do that. Uh, I wish we could. I mean, I have a local businesses and I would love for you to make all your purchases at my store because I do get to share that sales tax revenue with the city. Uh, one thing Ace Hardware has actually done though is done acehardware.com. So if I don't stock it and you still want it because they have ten times the inventory I do, you can order it online and they'll ship it to my store and guess what? The city does, I get credit for sale and the city gets the sales tax. So I guess it's acehardware.com versus Amazon, but, uh, we just don't have the capability of, of fighting that battle. Other than the fact of educating people to shop local like we've tried. Uh, and hopefully we'll continue to try to do. And that's just realistic.
Thank you. Alright, now we will start this one. How you feel about a community bowl that may have to be partially funded by a property taxes? How you feel about a community pool that may have to be partially funded by a property tax assessment?
I think a community pool in Fortuna would be a, a really, really good thing for lots of reasons. Um, it gives people another social gathering place. We can teach kids how to swim so they don't drown in the river. Just, um, we can have classes. We can have competitive sports. There's, there's a lot of really good reasons to have a community pool. If the only way we can get it is through a tax assessment, then I think we would have to look at that and see what kind of assessment are we looking at? How much is it going to cost? How long would the tax go on? Forever? Or just until the pool's paid for? Or just until you have enough money to build it? Or do you, how much does it cost to maintain it? There's a million questions that come to mind when I think of this. I'd love to have one. I, I think it's a great idea and I think it would be a, a really good thing for our community and, and actually bring people to Fortuna, which I keep preaching about all the time. So it would be nice to have one. Um, the, the property tax, I, I would have to look into it more and have to know more about it to really tell you how I feel about that exchange.
Thank you. All right. Jerry, the question is, how do you feel about a community pool that may have to be partially funded by a property tax assessment?
Uh, many of you probably don't know this, but um I tried to do a community pool back in the nineties here with my deceased ex-wife. Uh, it was from here. And it had absolutely zero traction in the community. I think it's had, that's been tried several times over the years. Uh, I like the idea of a community pool. I like the idea that there is a gathering place for the youth of our community because we have very few options for those kids. We have done worse, uh, adding to our property taxes. We've got bond measures and everything else. Uh, if it was well thought out and it didn't break the backs of all the seniors and those on fixed incomes that do own homes and have to pay their property taxes, I'd be for it. But if they can't come up with a definitive answer and it not be a burden on those, it would never pass and I wouldn't support it either.
Tammy, how do you feel about a community pool that may have to be partially funded by a property tax assessment?
Well, a community pool would be nice. We've got one of the highest rates of drowning in our, you know, our community. You could have, um, I think if a pool came in, I actually looked into it and I talked to different cities and community pools generally that, that revenue does not support the pool. So it does need some sort of, of other revenue. The two cities I talked to both have tax measures that support their pools. Um, one of them was very high and one of them wasn't. I think it would totally depend on how much the tax revenue was. Um, I think most people would be okay with a smaller one, but there's already so many things added on to our property taxes and those bills are high, but I think that would be really hard to pass and really hard to ask people to do. Um, but if the, if the tax was reasonable, I would support it.
Thank you.
You folks had a lot of questions.
We've got one more. Yeah, this is our last question that we have had submitted and then we'll have time for closing statements, right? Okay, perfect. All right. This is question, uh, Barry, are you with this one?
Just lucky me. Start where we finish.
Our Main Street Theater, we want it back. And how will you support working with Cinema West to repair and reopen our movie theater?
I don't think this is going to be a very, this may not be a very popular answer. You have to realize how, I'm a conservative and I own my own business and I have to pretty well pay my own bills. I remember the day that theater was revitalized and opened. I went to that open house night. It was packed and we were amazed at how beautiful it was and the, and the movie that we saw there that night. And over the years, I went to many a movie there with my son. Uh, and I saw it continued to deteriorate. And then the earthquake just did it in. Um, as much as I'd like to see that theater uh revitalized, I don't think it can be done unless uh, the, the owner has no incentive to it because he's, he's in business for profit. And I just don't, I personally don't I can't give a, a business money, taxpayer money to run a private business because I would never ask for that in return. So that's why it's probably not very popular. But if the city owned it, if he, we could get it and we could turn it into a community center and a multifunctional center, then I'd be behind it. But I wouldn't give that guy a dime. He got insurance for it. Tell him to fix it.
The question, our Main Street Theater, we want it back. How will you support working with Cinema West to repair and reopen our movie theater?
I don't see, I mean, the city can, can maybe help with getting permits to go through, but the city can't pay to have the theater fixed. You know, if the, the man's not interested and somebody wants to buy it and do it, I mean, the city will do everything we can to help. You know, speed the permitting up or, or do that, but you can't give tax dollars to private businesses. You know, like Jerry said, that's just not something that, that is even legal to do. Um, so there's not really a whole lot. I mean, we can offer, you know, help in telling them, you know, the process that they need to go through. Um, but unless he's willing to sell the business to somebody who wants to put it, you know, wants to put it back together. I loved having our theater here. It's a landmark for our city. Um, I mean, it's always looked great. I would hate to lose it, but there's not a whole lot the city can do.
All right. Now, last question. Our Main Street Theater, we want it back. How will you support working with Cinema West to repair and reopen our movie theater?
Okay, I don't know anything about Cinema West or working with them or how difficult it is or anything about that. What I would, if this is even possible, this is what I have had rolling around in my head for some time now, but I don't know that it's possible. I would have to get in there and find out. And that is for the city to purchase it or take it by eminent domain. I don't know how we would get it. And then apply for historical grants or grants for historical buildings and see if we can renovate it back to when the Pixies were touching fingers on the ceiling and with the long chandeliers. I mean, it was such a magnificent theater. Broke me into pieces when they split it up into little boxes. Um, I'd like to see it turned into a live theater instead and hold events there and have a, a, a live theater company come in and start having live theater here in Fortuna, which would bring people from out of the area. And in the Mill District, planning, build a modern new theater for movies. That's just an idea I have. I don't know if it'll actually work or not, but we got to start somewhere.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so that was all the questions we had. Has there been any more submitted?
No, that's good.
So now you're, you're going to get three minutes for your closing statement and Jerry went last time, so Tammy, you will begin your closing statement.
I'm proud of Fortuna and our citizens. We work together to help each other in times of need and disaster. We need to do the same to improve our, to improve our city. City, uh, our city council is a nonpartisan position. As a council member, I have and will continue to listen and represent all the citizens of Fortuna. Being a council member is all, not always easy. Sometimes we may have to make very hard decisions to keep the city, city functioning. Fortuna is a wonderful place to live, work, raise our family and retire. I'm honored to have represented you as mayor and would be grateful for the opportunity to con- continue to serving service our community for another term on the Fortuna City Council. I also want to say that um, I'll add a little bit about Measure P. Measure P Fortuna's sales tax is eight point five. Out of that eight point five, Fortuna gets one point seven five of that. Um, the seven five is our original, is our add-on tax. So we don't get a lot of our sales tax. Eureka's sales tax is nine point two five. So Fortuna is only asking to make ours equal to Eureka. If we go to Costco, we go to Target, we're already paying what we're asking our citizens to pay. So I don't think that's being unreasonable to pay the same in Fortuna to support your city as it is to support, you know, Eureka, Eureka's Police Department, Eureka's City Hall, Eureka's employees. Um, we have to take pride in our city and, you know, nobody wants to pay more taxes, including myself. But we need that. Um, last year, um, as far as grants, we ha, we used a hundred thousand dollars of our Measure E money to get eight hundred thousand dollars in grants. So using our tax measure, you know, to help with, you know, bringing more money into the city is another good option that we have um to do this. Uh, it's let's see, well, I had one other note on here. Um, by, by improving our economic development, you know, at some point we may not have to have our tax measure anymore. So it would be nice if we can just keep helping build our businesses and get this tax measure passed because we need money to make money. And that's all I have to say and I hope that I will be representing you for another term. Thank you, everybody, for coming and listening today.
Thank you. All right. Now.
Well, in closing, I want to assure all of you that I can do this job. I feel that I'm up for the task and while I do have a lot to learn, I can begin right on day one figuring out what I don't already know. I'm a quick learner. I know how to listen and I actually prefer listening rather than just making a lot of noise. I also, I'm good at making noise though. I also feel like I have a good amount of common sense and logical thinking skills. As promised in my candidate's statement, I am here for everybody. I want to represent everyone. I don't want to bring my own agenda to the city. I want to reflect the wants and needs of the entire community. And I know that we can come together to make the city even better than it already is. I want to thank you again and I hope that you'll consider voting for me on November fifth or when you mail your ballot in, whichever comes first.
All right, Jerry, your closing statement.
Well, Mel's got somewhere to go, so I'll make mine brief. Just kidding.
I just want a drink.
That's honesty, that's honesty in government right there. I think we all do. Now, I just want to thank everybody for your time. Uh, it's important that you were here. It's important that you guys were here, that we are exercising what our founding fathers fought hard for us to have. And that was the ability to engage civically, vote for representation and do it, you know, in a, in a way that reflects who we are, which we are proud Americans. Uh, we care. I think we care about this city. We care about how we run this city. I care, you care. That's why we're all here. All I will say is if you think I can bring value to the city and help uh, that transaction in a way that's positive and meaningful and forward-thinking, vote for me. If not, you got two great candidates sitting here. Uh, you get a vote for two. Um, two years from now, you get a vote for three. So uh take the time to vote. Tell your neighbor to vote. Tell your friends to vote. Tell folks that you may not even like to vote because people work hard for them to have the right to do that. And let's, let's make this a great election year. That's all I got to say.
All right. Well, I want to thank you all for coming sincerely. I appreciate it. I want to thank uh, our senior chambers for helping put this on, as well as our board, our chamber board, and all of you for attending. So thank you all for coming.